Were you on the trip last week?
No, I was not. So I was having vacation myself.
I was gonna say. Either way, you probably had more fun.
I can admit that what he did, that's for sure.
They grew up overboard. He got drunk. Came home at night, tried to get the door, and it didn't break. It fell down a level.
That's why?
Yeah. They don't really draw. No forms.
Except like that Curtis partnership, I mean, he tripped him. He should.
Yeah. Lucia leaves.
Yeah. These are what happens a lot.
Up and through. That, through. Everything.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, I understand. No. This is most of that.
Oh, okay.
My gosh. Down.
Don't worry. Get rid of it. One, two.
Where, where were you?
All right, I'll call the work session of Fort Baldwin to order. First time business of our staff report.
Thank you, and I left my staff report in my office, but I think I can remember it. And you'll have to bear with me, I was out all afternoon, had a doctor's appointment with my son, so. The Communities of Excellence, I believe the county is proceeding with that. We have the three members and a memorandum of understanding should appear on the next, next agenda. So I know that's been a subject that's been of interest to this board. Also, last week, you'll remember, we had flooding, and I'm sure your roof didn't do so hot. But we're still digging out from that. It just left mud everywhere, and there's a lot of handwork that we have to do specifically in the parks. And it's been fairly wet since, and remained wet since that time, so we can't get heavy equipment in there. So we are trying not to make more damage than what we already have. One of the things that we are going to need to be cognizant of is that there is another logjam in the river directly behind. It's okay. Directly behind Heritage Park. And I've seen photographs, haven't seen it in person, hoping to get down there tomorrow. Just to see what we can do and what sort of damage it might, it might cause.
Before, of course, is away to my mother's house.
It's, yeah, because we had a couple of large trees go down due to the swirling nature of the, of the water action there. So anyway, the street department is taking care of the streets that were muddied in, it's still, still a little bit wet. Where it is dry, it's almost powder dry. It's kind of interesting, we're stacking it up like snow on the side of the fields. Anyway, so fun and games with, with that. Yeah, I'll talk about this one out here. And I think that is Linda, I don't have my staff before. What's that?
Ninety-two.
Oh, yeah, and I sent something out to you guys just immediately before the meeting about the safety issue on ninety-two. That, that is scheduled for 2020, and they're scheduled to spend $5 million on the, the road between Commercial and Missions Road. I believe is where they were funding on that, turn lanes, et cetera. So I've sent, I said that information, you might take a look at that.
Yeah, all right, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
That doesn't include four lane down there, does it?
I don't believe so. I, I, I think it's mostly turn lanes and shit.
I think the long-term plan is to make that four lane from Kearney all the way up to that city.
Okay, well, yeah, five, five million is not going to be able to cover. Yeah, 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 so anyway, so that's, that's the majority of my report. If I can, if I can reserve the right to, before we, if I remember something else before we adjourn.
No problem.
We'll, we'll go for it.
Any questions for Mr. Garrett?
Oh, I'm sorry. There, I remember. I did send you earlier today, I had intended to send it in the packet, but it was the park board master plan, which Bob was the chairman, gosh, that was sometime last year. So that was, that was something I don't know that we had brought forward to, to his board, and just how aware this board was, so I wanted to get it on there. And make sure that it's something that was seen. Bob, you were the chairman, anything that you want to add concerning that report?
No, it's fine, I guess that's how I remember it anyway, but I believe it has to be approved by this board, doesn't it?
It was.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Okay. I missed that, yes. Did anybody bring anything to you about glass?
Oh, yes, and what, and, and we have the playground equipment down at the bottom of this, but we wanted to expand it, and we really couldn't expand it because of the, the notice time. A couple of years ago, we had a, some issue out at the North Field, I don't know what the number is, I know it is the North Field. Or, okay, at Smithport Park, and there was lots of rubbish, glass in it. Last year, that was capped again, and we didn't have any problem with it last year. Turns out that we were having problems again, so I'm not sure if it was, if it's the rain that we've had this year or the wack, but the glass is back. And, and I made Parks Department aware of it, we need to put together a plan.
There was, there was some Saturday night, I noticed some on the gazebo as well, on the floor of the gazebo. Same stuff that's out in Field Number One of the parks, just minute pieces of glass, dangerous.
Sure, and so anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll be trying to figure out what, what the remedy for that is, and it's, it's gonna take, take something to, to go about that. But anyway, and I think, and you and I talked about that, is that something that we want to put on a work session, or, or how do we want to handle it?
Yeah, I, I think at this point, so I, my son was out practicing on Saturday morning and slid into third, and we just got a piece of glass, so. So, and I stopped and picked up and ended up with a handful of glass, just kind of picking up and not moving from one spot, so. You know, I'm comfortable if the Parks Department kind of puts together a plan and wants to come back to present what they did, you know, it, I know it's an issue we need to address, and you might want to get it addressed, but they're the experts and.
Well, I thought we had it lifted, but apparently it was raining, it's brought that to the, to the surface again, so we'll, we'll see what we can get for you, and we'll report back. Okay, that's it.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Garrett? Anything else?
Yeah, no, that's it.
Very good. We'll now call to order the public hearing for the purpose of listening to public input for our property tax levy. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address the bill? Seeing none, we will adjourn the public hearing and move on to Agenda Item Number Five.
Alderman Blumker. I move to approve Bill Number Two Seven Seven Four Dash Seventeen, setting the property tax level levy for the first reading.
Second. Seconded by Alderman Moore. Any discussion on that, Board? Do we know how, where we compare to other surrounding community areas? We have forty-seven terms?
Yes, we do, actually, one nifty thing, Jack found this, which is a ten-year rundown of the communities in Platte County. We do not have necessarily similar sort of thing, but in Kearney, theirs is point six-three-oh. Is there a tax rate? Or ours is point four-seven.
Set point seven.
And.
Platte City is one point zero-eight-eight-six.
Yeah, so there's the information that happened.
Yeah. So Platte City is like, more than twice, two and a half times somewhere.
Yeah, and Kearney's is almost fifty.
Fifty-seven, yeah, okay. That's why it makes so much revenue from our rate.
So just two points of clarification on this. One, we're just, we have the, the ability to change it every other year, and this is not one of those years to change, but we are required to set it, and set it by the first of September, correct?
Correct.
Which is why we're doing it as an emergency ordinance, because the county didn't give us the rates until after our last meeting. So for those of you watching at home, there's part of your answer.
We, we don't like to do emergency reading, but because of the time, the deadlines we have, we have to do two readings at usually, especially called meetings like this, so. Any other discussion? And as all of you know, the tax levy actually went down slightly due to the Hancock amendment. So if anybody complained about our tax going up, it's not relative to the property taxes here, so just for, just make sure that all board members know that. Other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Arnold.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Booth.
Aye.
Alderman Blumker.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carriers, Mr. Garrett, would you read the bill?
Yes, an emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Fulmer, setting the property tax levy on all taxable properties within the city of Smithville, Missouri for 2017.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for a second reading. All members of.
Move to approve Bill Number Two Seven Seven Four Dash Seventeen, setting the property tax levy for a second reading.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Wilson. Discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Arnold.
Aye.
Alderman Blumker.
Aye.
Alderman Booth.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Motion carriers, Mr. Garrett, would you please read the bill?
An emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Fulmer, setting the property tax levy on all taxable properties within the city of Smithville, Missouri for 2017.
Thank you. Item number six. Is your motion? And then we'll have a discussion. Alderman Booth.
Move to have the presentation on authorization number sixty-seven, project financing.
Seconded by Alderman Chevalier. We have with us tonight our financial advisor, Todd Goffey. And we would like Todd to come up here. How many have you met Todd before?
I think he's been here for the fifth meeting.
Anyway, Todd's been our financial advisor for a few years, and he has given us some great direction in the past. And one, a couple of things we're going to discuss today is financing opportunities and suggestions for Manglo Station and our overflow basin, et cetera, et cetera. These are all water and wastewater related projects, so actually, these are all wastewater projects. Todd, I'm going to turn the time over for you for your presentation, and where you can ask Todd questions and have a discussion there. Thank you, Mayor, good to see you all. Certainly, if you have questions, as we go, just ask a question as we go. I think as the mayor indicated, it's been a little over four years now when we first made a presentation to the board and talked about different types of financing options for various capital projects. Some of which at that point included the water and sewer projects that are being contemplated now. And the, the city does have two outstanding issues at this point. Four years ago, when we had the discussion, there were some revenue bonds outstanding as well that have since paid off. So at this point, you're down to a series, two thousand and seven, series of certificates of participation, and then there was a subsequent issue done after that point in two thousand and twelve. Before we kind of get into some of that information, I thought maybe what we might do without just delusion you with a bunch of debt service schedules and a bunch of numbers out of your audited financial statements. I thought what you have in your board packet are two schedules. I think the first one that is in there is basically just a summary of financial operations for the last five years, two thousand and twelve through October thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Certainly, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year, and so we'll add that as that information becomes available. But what we look at from a municipal finance, tax-exempt bond perspective really is, is how, how are the water sewer funds doing? In this case, you've got good revenue growth over time. We look at operating expenses, you'll notice that we have backed out depreciation. That's a non-cash item, although it's calculated each year, and Dan can certainly get into the details on that. At the end of the day, it's not, you're not ever paying Mr. depreciation in cash, so we back that out of our calculations and our analysis. You'll also note that there was a one-time legal settlement back in two thousand and thirteen, a two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars that we backed out as well. But what we try to get down to is on a yearly look, what is the change in your net position in that proprietary fund? And, and so you can kind of track that going back to two thousand and twelve, where you've had a positive change each and every year. So what that really tells us is that the system's being operated in a, in a financially economical manner. And if you're contemplating additional improvements, we believe you've got the capacity to absorb those additional payments for financing and still operate in an efficient manner going forward. I'm going to maybe pause there before we get into the next schedule, just to see if there's any comments that you might have on that information.
So the way I just heard it is, we can proceed with some of these improvements and not have to make any changes at all?
Correct.
Okay, basically.
Changing relative to rates.
Well, rates, or taking out a bond, or anything like that, or whatever, or coming up with some other sort of funding mechanism? We can just undertake this on our.
Well, what we're talking about is, is doing an additional certificate of participation issue would be the funding mechanism. And at the same time, we would provide for the new improvements that are being contemplated, and those are all sewer improvements at this point. We would also refund those prior certificates of participation, lower the interest rate, and save some money there as well. As you can see from that summary too, that a lot of, year over year, we typically, our revenues from our water increase, and that would be indicative from the additional building, and the new homes that are being built, et cetera. So with the, with the number of new home building permits we have, and how fast we are growing, we would expect that number to continue to go up over, over, over revenue. Melissa.
I'm looking at this, and back in two thousand and fourteen, what happened, our operating income went down quite a bit. I mean, it's coming back up, but what happened there, is that something we may be concerned about going forwards? What happened in two thousand and fourteen?
To me, I think the biggest change that I saw there was a jump in operating expenses from thirteen to fourteen. You had a little bit of revenue growth that year, but there was a much larger jump in operating expenses, and then it has kind of come down ever since.
So what was that increase in operating expenses? Can somebody tell me?
May I ask that question? Specifically, you're saying in two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
And that's in the expenses?
Right.
And I'm trying to think about that, and it's not hitting, it's not hitting me, I did not anticipate your question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
We can certainly go back to.
Sure.
I was just curious, was there something unique there that year that we need to maybe consider going forwards, or was it a one-time jump that year?
I believe it was a one-time thing, I think it was, it was engineering, frankly, because that was the year that we came up and started working on the South Sewer Project and, and the main lift station. So I believe that those are one-time, but we can certainly make sure.
Okay.
Can I make sure you have.
Yeah, I will, I will.
And just to, just to add for the conversation, a lot of this is to help make the southern portion of Smithville developable, developable, and perhaps bring in additional commercial.
Correct.
Now, all that kind of stuff as well.
You are correct.
So it's a, it's a big deal.
Melissa.
An additional question, I know the main lift station, that's been an issue for several years, so has there been like a?
Sinking fund?
Not a sinking fund, I'm trying to think, prepaid accrual done for the, for knowing that we needed to work on the main lift station? Have we been putting any money aside for that?
The money, the money being put aside has been for the South Sewer Project, which this also includes a portion of. Part of what we're trying to do with the South Sewer Project is eliminate several lift stations, which creates savings, so that we can use that for projects like, like this. And I think that that's where, what we're talking about here is funding for this, for this project coming out of.
Okay, but I just know the main lift station's been an issue for what, fifteen years or so?
Yeah, for a long.
So I'm just curious, funding-wise, why we're still talking about funding for that when we knew we needed it several years ago? Or if it was just the timing of money, that's all.
Okay, any other questions?
How many lift stations will get removed?
Jack, what's that number, is it six or seven?
I didn't hear the first part of the question.
Number of lift stations being removed to the interceptor of the main lift station project?
With the main lift station and interceptor, just one, Pizza Hut.
Okay.
The second one has to build, the second phase.
Approximately how many?
With the second phase and the first phase combined, it'd be five gone.
Five more stations.
With the ability to take a sixth one off with another short line, it's not hard. Now, these men's got to take a lay-in.
Also, there is an, there is an answer, and I hesitated to give it, give it to you because it might not be a popular answer. One of the reasons why there's not a lot of funding there is because even into the second or third year that, that Mayor Fulmer was mayor, and I had been here, the general thought on the part of, of the board was, how low can we keep rates? How low can we keep the taxing, the process? So we've been able to only recently move forward and try to expand revenues so that we can do planning.
Okay.
Yep, and for, for those of you that have been here in Smithville for the several, several decades, you probably know that much of the rates and the rate structure for the water rates were simply to cover expenses in producing water and no capital costs. And so we've been trying to play catch with that ever since then, and we do that through impact fees, through, obviously, through housing building structures, the impact fees, help fund along the infrastructure there. But for many, many years, the city just chose to charge for water production costs itself, I'm not afraid of that.
For instance, the first full year I was here, we had a presentation to the board where we discussed the reserve account, incorrectly stated, but that's what it was generally called. We had a grand total of eleven thousand dollars in, in a reserve account. We've expanded that greatly, and that's where, where the revenues come from. It wasn't specifically intended for any, any one project, but that's what it's there for.
One, one last question, just to sum all this up. When we take, take out one of those lift stations, or it might be the wrong term, but.
That's right.
How much, how much in maintenance fees do we save on that?
Average currently is five thousand dollars per year per station.
So taking out five.
Per pump or per station?
Per station.
Okay. There could be quite a bit of savings on that as well.
Especially over time.
Yeah, with the number of lift stations we have, we're around thirty-three, Jack, is that correct?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, and so it's costing us about a hundred and fifty thousand a year right now, just for maintenance. And most other cities our size typically will have, instead of thirty-four lift stations, they'll have three or four lift stations. And so that may, that is an impact of about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year just on maintenance, and just an expense to a service a year.
My question's pretty straightforward, the three projects we have listed, what are those price tags? So the, the main lift station, the overflow basin, and interceptor, the south interceptor.
We have one price tag, as I understand, Jack, is that correct?
That's for all of them combined.
Right.
What Todd's putting there is just for the phase one portion, phase two, it's going to be another three-ish.
So phase one is the lift station.
It's authorization sixty-seven, the overflow basin, the lift station, the interceptor from the overflow basin all the way down to Pizza Hut Station.
So that's approximately what?
Just under nine million. For everything, including the refinery.
All right, and this is only the first phase, there's other phases coming after this?
No, this is the entire project. Now, then, the South Sewer Project will take place after that. We, we had to do this first, because this, this had a, what would have been a bottleneck for the South Sewer.
Does this have anything to do with, will this be changing anything from force main to gravity flow?
Yes. Good, good eye. Right now, we do have a, it's a force main from the Pizza Hut Lift Station. We call these things, you know, they're pretty original names, Pizza Hut Lift Station, Burger King Lift Station, that's not even there anymore. So we're, it will all be gravity from, from that point down to the, to the wastewater plant, which is easier to run, it eliminates one of the pumps, it helps us get more capacity, et cetera, so.
Maintenance on gravity, on gravity, on gravity feeds anywhere just almost nothing, because it's all asphalt, and you don't have to go in and pump it, and most of the.
But the installation's.
So. So would there be another phase down the road, because is north still force main, like north of town?
North is, north is still force main. And, and there are some smaller projects that we're trying to undertake that will help ease part of that, part of that problem. It's, it's a head pressure issue, but that one, that will still be on the.
On the.
It, it, that will probably appear in the next five-year CIP plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions right now? Todd, why don't you do? Todd, once you can do one. So the financing mechanism is the issuance of certificates of participation. So it's identical to what was done in 2012 as well as 2007. That is considered an annual appropriation financing, or kind of a fancy name for a lease purchase agreement. It's just that the lease purchase is taken and it's certificated, so it looks more like bonds, but legally it's not considered bonds because you haven't gone out and voted revenue bonds. So the board has the ability to issue the COPs, certificates of participation, and then the annual payments are then subject to the appropriation pledge by this board each and every year.
And that typically is included as part of the budget?
Yes.
So the annual payment shows as a budget expense. Does the COP, is it reflected as an outstanding debt, like assets versus liabilities? Okay.
So along those lines, if you go to the second page, Mayor had mentioned impact fees. And so what we have modeled here is what the new COPs would look like that could be issued later this year. The timing of that will depend upon your project itself, and we wouldn't move forward with finalizing the COPs until after the project is bid, because we want to know what is the bid price for the project. But those numbers are based on a nine-million-dollar project, and then presently you have approximately a million-two of sewer impact fees that are in the bank. We believe that it makes sense to utilize about two-thirds of that amount, so roughly eight hundred thousand dollars would go towards this project. That would leave you with a little over four hundred thousand dollars of sewer impact fees for future use. So you're not borrowing the full amount for the project, but also at the same time, you're not expending one-hundred percent of your sewer impact fees all at once. So we think this is a good balance between using cash that you've accumulated versus borrowing at fairly low interest rates currently. So if you look at that next sheet, if we go backwards, you have been paying about four hundred thousand dollars a year for those two COP payments each and every year. If you would skip over eighteen, just because it's an odd amount, the way the new COP payment would work, but if you look at the calendar or the fiscal year 2019 and thereafter, you'll see those payments would go to a total of a little over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So in essence, it would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more a year than what you're paying now. And we believe, based on that previous sheet that we talked about, that showed sound financial operations, that's why we believe that you could take on that additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of your current structure. Would it make sense to level those payments out? Because it looks like the debt service... I'm sorry, those aren't the... Is that what the payment is there?
Yeah, sorry, I'm going to come on the right. Twenty seventeen.
What we've tried to do there, Mayor, is exactly that, is look at level payments on an aggregate basis. So the 2017 payments start out a little bit lower, but when, for the new money, but when you look at the refunding overall, it would be a level payment of about seven fifty a year.
So to that end, to Melissa's point, where 2014, where we had that debt, that's still about the same amount that we took in that year even with the debt. So even kind of worst-case scenario planning, you know, that debt servicing is about what that amount was. So, thank you, I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Yeah, we were trying to measure the incremental amount, so you've been paying three fifty and you've been comfortable at that level. Excuse me, you've been paying four hundred, so you've been comfortable at that level. So going forward, you're adding about three hundred and fifty thousand on to that over the level that you've already been paying.
This is for twenty years?
Yes. In the current rate environment, we think your borrowing cost is going to be somewhere around three and a quarter percent is what these numbers were based on. Obviously, we won't know until you actually get into the market, but for a twenty-year financing, we're not quite at the lows that we were a little over a year ago, but it's still, for twenty-year fixed-rate money, it's a pretty low rate.
There's going to be a question for Jack or Steve. On the equipment we'll be putting in, we're looking at twenty years to pay that debt off, what's the lifespan of this equipment that's being put in?
If we're lucky, fifty-plus.
Okay.
If we have a major catastrophe, it may be lasting. It's supposed to be fifty years.
Now, if we look at the age of smart downtown, infrastructure, and so, it's going to be ninety-two.
Let's not use that as the standard, yeah.
I just want to, you know, I didn't want to be upside down in debt versus...
That's a good question.
We don't need any more geyser standards.
Yeah, no.
I'm confident we will have several more locked before your other questions. Are you got other questions for Todd? Well, that's just kind of a high-level, kind of little review of what we've been looking at, and the COPs will be a process that we'll need to go through, and ultimately, this board has to sign off and approve the issuance of those. And we'll be getting with staff to kind of work through some of the details, but ultimately, we won't end up with the final sizing until after the project gets bid. That way, if it's a little bit lower or a little bit higher, then we can adjust up and down as needed.
Were there any other financing options looked at? Or is this just, or was it just this one and how you're going to structure it?
You didn't get the benefit of the four-year-ago discussion, so I apologize for that, but the other option would be to actually go out and vote revenue bonds, and that requires a simple majority voter approval to get those issued. And then the challenge with revenue bonds in this market environment is you don't really get much of an interest rate benefit versus doing the COPs. You're having to go through the time and expense of an election, and then when you vote the bonds, you've got a set voted amount. So if the project came in higher, you've only got a lower amount of bonds approved. So there's some pitfalls with doing that. The only time we'll really see that being real beneficial for projects that are able to go through a state revolving fund program, and you get a little bit of lower interest rate there, but we talked about that several years ago, and we didn't think this was conducive to that program. And Jack could probably add on that.
Now, that's what we discovered at the time, that this project type is not going to get us into the RLF stuff, so...
Well, it wasn't the interest rate, only about one and a half percent less, somewhere there.
Oh, I think even less than that.
Yeah.
Probably even less than that. Not for the headache and for the cost of doing the election and the bottom issue and all that, and not having a project put out and bid, et cetera, and probably having a gap there. Four years ago, the board felt that the COP method would probably be our best option for the project.
The non-lift, the interest rates have gone up recently too, so they'd be even worse off than they were, we talked about a couple of years ago.
I'm glad it would have been the low point in interest rates. Melissa?
I don't know that interest rates are going to go down, but can you with a COP, if rates go down, are you going to negotiate that, or are you locked in at twenty years for like the three-point-two-five?
We'll make sure that there's a redemption provision included in the new COPs that give the city the right. And your option, if you wanted to refund that, generally eight years, maybe ten years, you've got the ability to do that. Very good. Jack?
I just wanted to highlight from an additional revenue source. If we made gain one hundred to a hundred and fifty new home permits each year, this is an impact fee project because it's based upon additional development, so any additional revenue we collect could be used to make that additional payment. At a hundred permits a year, that's two hundred and eighty thousand a year. At a hundred and fifty, it's four hundred and twenty thousand a year. So there will be, in addition to rates, we'll have additional impact fee revenue that will be available in the future.
And that revenue, we don't apply that to the payments unless approved by the market.
That's ultimately a year-to-year budget carry.
Other comments or questions for Todd? All right, Todd, anything else you want to say? No, thank you for your time. So what would the next step would be for us to then decide, probably opt for bid if we decide to move forward with the project?
It's headed out for bid, is a great suggestion.
Yeah, we're waiting for the final approval from DNR. Should be another twenty-one days. They've had it for a while, as they say, but we're pushing to get the bid out so that we can begin construction over winter. A lot of this is over winter.
So obviously, within the next three or four weeks, we would be discussing what that bid would be, then awarding it, then going through the CIP process. So pretty tight tie for me.
It's not necessarily related to this specific project, but as a city grows and we have more residents or more businesses demanding more water, is our water department set up to handle additional demand without doing much maintenance or...
Yes. We have a plan in place.
Okay.
It includes an expansion when we reach a certain percentage. Right now, we estimate that's seven to eight years out before we have to start that planning process.
Unless people water their lawns a lot during the summer. Very good. Okay, thanks very much for your presentation here.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, I'm sure we'll be able to talk to you some sooner. Steve, you can have your chair.
I'll get over there eventually.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the project financing? Very good, let's move on to Admiral's segment. The CID for historic downtown.
I'm going to discuss the CID for historic downtown.
All right, I'm going to turn some time over to Steve on that.
Okay. I believe in your packet, Jack had a description of two different ways that this could come about, and I'm going to have him talk about that here in just a second, but one of the things I wanted to talk about, potential revenue, because I'm not sure what the thought process was, and I want to make sure we go into it with clear understanding. We took a scientific wild guess at what some of the sales tax revenues were downtown. A little bit more scientific than wild, so it's not just out of the blue, but we anticipate that the city is a sales tax generator. We charge sales tax on water as a product. So for the downtown, we have a question out that we have not had it answered by legal authority. Would that be included in any sort of sales tax in a CID? My thought is that, I believe that it would. So I believe we should proceed with that information that it may or may not be included. We average about twenty thousand dollars in sales tax, one cent sales tax. The rest of downtown averages about one cent, or twenty thousand dollars in one cent. So worst-case scenario would be a twenty thousand dollar annual one-cent CID for the historic downtown. Best-case scenario, as it stands now, forty thousand. And so that's the potential revenue. Jack?
Yes?
Can you talk about the two ways that getting a CID established for downtown could be gone about?
Sure. In your packet, you have some of that information related to it. There are two ways to organize it, either political subdivision or not for profit. Depending on how it's set up, gives you options on how it can be funded. It can be either through a real property tax assessment associated with it, a special assessment, or it can be through sales tax. Vast majority of these projects are sales tax-generated, but it doesn't mean that you can't do either, it just means that sales tax is the most common methodology. The bigger issue with CID's in this particular scenario would be you have to be pretty specifically upfront with what the project is, what the timeframe is, what the cost is, all of that stuff upfront in the plan, then you hold your, you get your support from the property owners in the area. There's a petition process for CID. It's either fifty percent of the, I think it's the total assessed value, or more than fifty percent of it per capita owners. One or both of those will trigger the authorization to allow it to go forward. Steve had mentioned two different numbers, twenty or forty thousand in revenue, depending on whether or not the city's sales taxes that we collect are included. It kind of generates some rough numbers, assuming a three-and-a-half percent interest rate over twenty years, which is the maximum repayment time. A city would generate about five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for a project for, if the city's involved, there's about two hundred and eighty-six if the city's, sales taxes are not up. So that's the kind of paradigm we're looking at. It's a project in that timeframe, from a budgetary standpoint, what you can do. And then, in addition to public infrastructure, there is a potential for public services to be added in the particular district, which on the last page of the paperwork should have that, operating park facilities, leasing space for sidewalk cafes and tables, trash collection, limiting access to the roadway if the city consents, that kind of thing. So it's a little different than, you know, building a big stage or that kind of a park improvement right there in the downtown area, or a streetscape project, or any of that. So it's kind of a twofold process. You need to have a pretty defined scope of what you want, and you have to have a substantial volume from the property owners in the area that that's what they want as well, because they're the ones that have to file the petition with the board. All of it is approved by the Board of Alderman through an ordinance. That's the CID. The other option would be an NID, it's a little...
Neighborhood improvement.
Yeah, sorry, it's a neighborhood. It's a little different, not significantly, other than it's only special tax assessments, it doesn't apply to sales tax, but it's similar in the scope of what you can spend money on, streetlights, you know, public infrastructure stuff, but it is only special assessment. You have to go through an election process with the property owners in the area, and then you proceed from that standpoint. Whether it passes or it doesn't pass in that election, it's not an election at the county level necessarily. And it can be by petition. If you've got fifty percent of the property owners who submit the petition that meet the minimum, then it works.
Have any property owners expressed an interest in this? Or is this just being generated by the... Or is this just being generated by the board?
No, actually, in a couple of meetings regarding TIP and how they're having the CID up there to support their operations, some of the shop owners down here inquired about the possibility of doing it for them.
And it's, I would tell you, over the years I've been here, it cycles in and out. Some people want it, some people don't. It's never been to this part of the discussion where the board's actually discussing.
What would the purpose of the CID be to propose? I mean, what are they looking for in a CID?
Well, I believe some of the things mentioned are the things that they do already, you know, like for example, the Saturday night or Friday night movies and paying the fees associated with that, because you've got there's fees associated with showing movies to the public and then different little, the different little things that go on.
Beautification of projects.
I mean, streetscape by itself would be a perfect candidate for that, but I think we've already addressed that in other ways, but still...
I was going to say, the streetscape looks to me like the city's only got that pretty well handled, so they don't need anything for that. But if it would cover some of the activities that are down there, if that's a proper use for, I can see where that might be a benefit. How many of those people are taking bags for this?
Well, even, I believe it's the NID, correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, that would even include snow removal as an allowable expense?
My understanding, it's actually the other way around. That's the CID.
Oh, CID, okay.
Yeah, the NID is physical construction, almost ninety percent.
Snow removal of the sidewalks, because the street's already paved.
Right, no, the other sidewalks. And so that can be a...
An expense that would be covered by the CID.
And they could have a contract to have that done, and that contract would be paid out of the CID.
And it would be, we don't snow remove, we snow plow. And it becomes troublesome for businesses, and you've got two travel places, two work places, it's got to go somewhere. So if you're doing actual removal, you have different equipment than the snow plow coming in, getting that snow falling off and getting rid of it, so that the sidewalks are clear. It's clear in the winter time for shoppers. So it would be an actual removal versus plowing.
So the next step would be for the merchants to do a petition? Or make a proposal to the board, is that where we're at?
Yeah, I think they need to get an understanding of what they can do, what they want to do, come up with that concept of a plan, and then submit it all as one big petition.
But they would also have to be pretty specific as far as what they wanted to use those funds for.
Well, and the application itself needs to have some very specific, it'll require a lot of white work. Staff will have to be involved, obviously, on getting some of the work numbers for them. But if we've got a concept of where they're at, you know, it's a matter of getting someone to lay it out and design it in fashion so that it's close enough to get a bid number, so we know what that dollar amount is, and then we can extrapolate from there what it's going to take, sales tax-wise or property tax-wise, to be able to finance that project. If it's going to cost two hundred thousand, we know what we're seeing.
The reason I bring that up is I've been talking to a lot of people lately, and surprisingly, about ten to one, people that are in favor of what we're doing up on the hill. There's a few people, though, that say they will refuse to go up there and shop because of the CID tax. And I wonder if we do that downtown, if they would lose some business, because there were a number of people I talked to that said they just go to refuse to pay that one percent extra. But it's a minority of people, to be honest.
And that is a common complaint with those. Unfortunately for them, they're going to have to go to another community to buy their...
And if they go to another...
And they're going to be made at that.
Some of those will probably pay it anyway.
Here's part of the thing, though, I mean, we're not doing this. The shop owners are doing this.
Yeah, they have to come forward.
So, I mean, you know, Price Trumper's doing that up there with this, or the developer, basically, Price Trumper, they're doing it up there. I mean, that's the risk they're going to take. If the shop owners downtown want to put this together, and I would imagine if they said something about, you know, "We're doing this to support this activity and this activity and this activity," that all the kids and stuff, I'm sure people wouldn't object to it, but at the same token, it's their thing, not ours.
That's right. They're the ones that petition the city for that. They're the ones that put the plan together. They're the ones that, obviously, the city will approve it and then organize it, you know, appointing the board for that CID. But then it's their own legal entity.
And I think having a good plan where it shows the money's been spent on, you know, events and other things like that would be more than adequate to convince people that it's, you know, if it was there to go forward, that it's actually...
I had a resident complain about the CID up, it's going to be up on the hill. He said, "You know what? That's a lot of money out of my pocket for that CID." And I asked him, I said, "So how much money do you spend a year on groceries?" He said, "I spend thirty-six hundred dollars a year on groceries, three hundred dollars a month." And I said, "So up there a year, you'd be spending thirty-six dollars more, or three dollars a month more." He told me, like, "Oh, I guess it's not that much." And so, and plus, yeah, the price of gas would go down in Berry Road, et cetera. I think it'd be a cost efficient way to do that. But that was just one resident that complained about that to me. And after he said, "Maybe we won't be so bad." I think a lot of the issue with that, with any project like a TIP or CID, simply education for residents now to understand specifically what it is.
Does it cost them more?
It is.
So with that, with the CID for historic downtown, if that group wanted to come forward, the new economic development person could also help pull some of this together, is that correct?
Someone in that department could, yes.
Yeah, I expect it to not back there.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other discussion on the CID for downtown?
I just want to know, here when we're talking about the board to be elected or appointed, is that part of what they would present to the group that comes forward with the petition? Or is it something that they would do?
I think it's done by me for, we're talking about the board first. Or is it...
It depends on how they set it up, and depending on how they set it up, the board either approves it because they like the way they're doing it, or disapproves it and it doesn't happen. So it's an entire package of, here's what they're proposing, here's how you get nominated. Some of them are not-for-profit, and some of them are separate government entities. They have different rules about how that happens.
Okay.
So let's say they got together and they got this move in, forty thousand a year maximum, what we're thinking. What happens if, say, somehow their revenue doesn't meet projections and they spend money on something? Can we get, can we have any sort of liability to pay costs or something like that if they don't meet a debt that they have?
Well, they're a separate legal entity, so if they incurred debt on what their revenues are, it would be up to them, between them and their creditors, obviously, to resolve any of that. I would suspect, however, that in a new CID, they would probably be pretty careful about overspending their revenues. That'd be, that's what I would think. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to item number eight, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration parade. As I mentioned, a couple of weeks ago, I was contacted by Charlotte Bruce, and she would love to see members of the board in the parade on October the seventh, I believe.
That's correct.
And one of our board members suggested that we, and then she also said, "Do you want to all ride on one float? Or do you want to ride in cars, whatever it is?" And I asked her about floats, and she said, "Well, we don't have any extra floats, so the Board of Alderman would have to come up with their own floats and put it together." And so we may want to discuss what you want to do. One of our board members, who is often in different attire, proposed that we have, that we wear period attire for the parade, so we're here to discuss.
Can we say which period?
Past, present, future?
Which board member thought of this idea? I don't think we need to mention any names. I think we all know who that was.
Most likely, I can ride on any vehicle, their car.
So I guess a couple of things we want to decide here. A, do you want to all be on the same vehicle, on a float? Or B, do we want to acquire some cars and ride in cars?
When you say acquire, borrow, right?
Right. However, how would we want to do that?
Good point. Just walk?
It was a big one. So let's have some discussion on what we want to do. Don't all speak up at once.
Well, I don't know if you heard, but I mean, we could just walk along with the parade itself. No need to ride on any. Is another option, just throwing it out there.
Usually at parade, they like to have banners that identify what the entry is. So we want to have a Smithville Board of Alderman in there or something, a banner. Personally, I don't want to be carrying my own banner. If it were my parade, I would just say, "I'd rather ride in the car and not have to take the time to make a float, because frankly, I don't have a lot of time to make a float." I agree. See if we can acquire, hopefully, hit one, too. And I would suspect that if we want to acquire some nice vehicles, we have a couple of car dealerships here in the city that would be willing to offer their services. I'd give the board that.
Well, that narrows down the dealership.
What's that?
I said that narrows down the dealership.
They may not want their car to be...
Instead of period clothing, could we all have City Smithville emblem shirts to wear?
Yeah, we could. We don't have to do the period. I mean, it was just a suggestion by one of our...
It could be. The one thing, I think we can get that done in that amount of time.
Maybe you could do what it says, Alderman Honor or something like that, Steve?
I don't care what it says.
Always the blue one hundred and fiftieth anniversary shirts, too.
They have shirts out now with the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary on it.
Who's purchased their shirt?
I already got one.
Okay, yeah, me too, so, okay.
Also have a hat.
You're proud of that hat.
Very good. What hat? The one that says Smithville on it. Yeah, it made it for yours, I think. So what's the preference, everybody? Floats, walk, ride?
Ride.
Ride.
Car?
I don't care to walk, and if we can even toss out candy, I would be willing to do that.
I'm not sure what the rules are.
I didn't know if we could.
What Charlotte is going to allow.
They have problems with tossing candy out because it draws kids out into the streets for the parade.
You have to walk along and...
I guess, say, you have to walk along the side. I know.
So I know what Barb's doing. Barb's walking along the car.
We're not one.
So individual cars, is that what I'm hearing?
Sounds like it to me. We all have more than one. We all get in one vehicle, we've got a four.
Sure. I've been ready...
You could do three cars and have two of us.
I've been ready to go over that.
I think that might make sense, with three cars and have two cars. Is that agreeable with everybody? Do I really wear period clothing? I don't.
Current is a period.
If you want to wear your Star Trek uniform, I'd be...
Or dress up like the triple.
I can try to figure something out.
Okay, so the satellite consensus is that we contact the local dealership and see if we can borrow a few or four cars and wear away with them or not do period clothing stuff? Is that what I'm hearing? Well, we could have some sort of shirts, either one hundred and fifty, if there's something with Smithville on it, or you... Right, I would agree with that. Okay, any further discussion? Good. All right, Charlotte Bruce wanted to contact her to let her know what our plan is for the parade. Okay, let's move on to item number nine.
I moved to discuss the senior center rental.
Very good. Charlie, about Alderman Arnold. Corey, go ahead.
Yeah, it was brought to my attention that there, I know we spoke about this a while back in reference to the senior center being able to be rented out to other people and other events, obviously giving priority to the seniors for whatever needs they have. But it seems like there's been some restrictions put on that, I guess, where it was only available on the weekends and people couldn't get it during the week. So I wanted to kind of talk about that, because I know there's something in their lease, and I didn't know if that was part of it.
There's a couple of different things going on. One is, since this was talked about, I believe it was back in February, there's been a change in the cleaning schedule. We did have a gentleman who was coming in during the day and getting the cleaning done during the day, and then the meetings that occur in all of our various buildings were not affecting his work. He retired, went to another job, and then the next cleaner comes in after hours. And due to the various days that are available for cleaning, and to make sure that all the facilities are done correctly, we did, I made the decision to restrict some of the days over at the senior citizen, so that it could be adequately cleaned and taken care of for the events that are taking place throughout the week for the seniors. Also, the discussion that was had back in February also illustrates why these work sessions are important. The, there was a policy that was proposed, and then there was some discussion about what it should say. And in the wording that was done somewhat on the fly, or just quickly at the meeting, not reviewed, the wording was changed, that actually took out what the intent, I believe, was for and changed the intent. So staff afterwards wondered, "What does this mean?" We tried to follow the policy. The policy was somewhat difficult to understand. I think that we need to take another look at it, put it on a work session, and make sure it says what we want it to say, and allows us to have the opportunity to have the facility ready for the seniors.
So in summary, what does that mean for someone who says wants to hold an event over there on a Wednesday?
That's one of the nights that are being, that they're cleaning it. And so we would...
So what nights are it on, then?
Right.
For somebody...
Fridays, Fridays and weekends.
That's it?
Because the seniors meet Monday through Friday there, is that correct?
Correct. And they are beginning to meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well.
Okay, I mean, that was the point of this discussion.
Yeah, and the cleaning thing is something that's occurred since we talked about that. So I believe we probably need to sit down and go back over what it is that we wanted to say, and make sure that we still are delivering a clean facility for the seniors.
So the seniors meet every single Monday through Thursday?
Yes. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they are meeting every Tuesday. The group is in there every Tuesday. And then more frequently than not, there's also a group in there on Thursdays.
That is typically during the day until about four or five on that. So really, the facility is not being used on weeknights?
It has been cleaned on certain weeknights.
So how many weeknights is it being cleaned every weeknight, or clean every weeknight? Day after use? What's that?
She kept every day.
I think it's every day, right? Almost every day.
Yeah, after use.
So I guess, is this something that we have the park coordinator, is this something that they're tracking, the schedule of the facility?
It's tracked here, and we've only had one request for it to be used during the week.
And the resolution five oh seven, that was approved, right?
As amended, yes.
As amended, so.
So does it need to be changed to say that the senior center can only... So does it need to be changed to say that the senior center can only be rented on weekends?
I, I say, let's bring it up for a work session and, um, uh, because in that way we can, um, that we can have one that's proposed, though, somewhere.
Well, are we trying, are we talking about trying to change what the resolution says?
Well, I believe.
I think it makes quite well, I mean.
I was just asking from a standpoint of misunderstanding of if it could be rented through the week or not through the week.
About a month after that resolution was approved, Mike retired. That changed everything as it relates to us complying with the lease with the seniors to keep it clean. If we lay out all the facts and let you all see all of the picture at a work session, you can then say, here's where we need to go. That may work. It may be better to tweak that language so that we, but we only have one written agreement that we're obligated to meet and that's with the senior group. It's a lease that we have to make it and we have to clean it and we have to provide and tell everyone all those terms of that agreement. So in order to meet that agreement, I think that's, you guys get to look at that agreement and where we're at with the clean, um, and make an assessment as to where we're going to do it. I think the rental rates we can, that's easy enough to fix. It's a matter of not violating their lease.
I don't think we have any issues with rental rates. It's just, can they rent?
Yeah, no, I think rates are fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. The rental rates, I think we've, we've established that concept, but the bigger thing is when can it be used and not violate the lease of the seniors?
Right.
Because there, that was the primary question.
So I guess my question is, do we really need to work through it or is it?
I mean, I, I, as long as we got a way to track it and people know why or why not they can't have it on this day or that day, I, that's fine. It's just, just seemed like there was a roundabout way of going about continuing to deny the public to be able to rent the facility after we specifically took the time to say that they should be able to. It's just kind of the way I, I took it.
Well, and it was, it was offered for, for a weekend.
Right. Weekends are fine. We can make weekends and not violate the lease.
So, so there's no way to look at it on a case by case basis? Like say if someone does like one on a Tuesday, we can't like make some cleaning arrangements depending on what their hours are? Say they want it from six to nine or something like that? We couldn't say, oh, is this cleaning routine needs to come before or after that is done?
Well, they, they are here between, uh...
She gets here at five.
She gets here at five, yeah. She's usually here between, uh, five and eight.
And there's no way like for days that it's rented, say, just come after eight? I mean.
I believe we'd have to make a different arrangement. Yeah, we'd have to look at that arrangement and see what.
Well, maybe you could do that contract.
Addend it to the, amend the contract and then, uh, possibly during those days pay a little bit of the premium to the vendor to do that. Again, I, my personal opinion is I don't think our cleaning schedule should dictate what day we allow that facility to be used, just based on our cleaning schedule.
I mean, I don't know. I, I just don't think it's that complicated of an issue. It's just, and, and we've had one request since February.
Yeah, I'm concerned if we crack this thing back open, I know what headache it was for the board prior, uh, one of those headaches.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We've, we've had one request, I mean, why couldn't we, you know, look into that, that request and maybe make a special arrangement for it? It's not like we're having this every single day.
But I think if, in one way, if you were to do that, then you open up the possibility of others expecting the same thing if they ask.
And, and that, and that's part of it, is that it's, that when you, when you move a little bit this way, things give and then suddenly, you know, we're, we're trying to make a, a policy that can be followed. Board, board can make the, uh, make the decision, but we have certain agreements that have to be, have to be maintained. One is in agreement with the seniors, one is in agreement with the, the cleaning. We've got to take a look at it and, uh, and see if those things, uh...
I mean, you know, if you have a child who has a birthday and it falls on a Thursday, I mean, obviously they're going to want the facility on that Thursday. So, I mean, but, you know, I don't, I, I just don't see why it would be that complicated. It's just like, they come in and, well, no, you can't have the facility, the seniors are meeting on that Thursday, or, um, you can have it between ten and three or something. I, I, I mean, that would be a very easy scheduled thing to maintain.
If we can get the cleaning people to come in after that on Thursday night, it can work. We can't force them right now, but maybe we can change the contract that triggers it. Because if they leave a mess, the next morning, we'll get the seniors on Friday.
So all this hinges on what our contract with the cleaning people.
We just need, I mean, we can hire somebody separate to come in and privately do it.
You have a, a fifty dollar charge for four hours or?
Well, I mean, we have to do, possibly can add a premium or something like that on a night that it's not available.
And, and just as, as, as the guy who employs the gal that takes all this, I mean, literally, I'm, I'm hearing that everything's a case by case basis and now we're talking about premiums and everything else. I mean, that, that does become, uh...
You've only had one request, so, I mean.
Yeah, this sounds like we're looking for a problem.
Right. The waterfall's going to come in or anything. I just, it's just that there are going to be moments where people are going to want a very specific date for whatever reason. And if it's available, then it should be available. I mean, I don't know why a cleaning service would cancel out the entire day, is my point.
Well, we can look at, at what the requirements are on the, on the cleaning service.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All right, let's move to item number ten. Are there any motions to discuss that?
I move we discuss the Harborview Townhomes HOA water bill.
Sorry about all the booth.
If I may, uh, sir, um, I believe all of you were present when Mr. Foley... I'm just present here. Thank you for being here, Mr. Foley. Uh, I brought this up to your attention, uh, that there was a, um, a significant water leak on the sprinkler system at the, uh, Harborview Townhomes, um, sprinkler system. And, um, and city employees, uh, saw the water leak, notified the HOA, turned it off, it was repaired and, uh, uh, back in business. In that, in that time, almost two million gallons of water flowed through their meter. I had our meter, so that, so that they wouldn't have to request it, I had our meter checked just to make sure it was correct. It was correct. And, um, and so he got the, uh, the famous fourteen thousand dollar bill. Is that correct? Is that the number? Close to? So if anybody ever gets a water bill of that magnitude, it will make you, it'll make your jaw drop, I'm sure. So, um, uh, he, he came forward and asked for some consideration and then I'm going to let Dan talk a little bit about what the policy is, what the ramifications are.
Well, before you go down there, can, can I, did we, did you find out what actually caused the leak?
Well, there's really no way to say it, but, uh, it's just a pipe rupture winner because nothing we know. The system runs great, it's been, we have to load all the water down and it does for the year, you know, and, and we turn it on to spring.
I guess the reason I ask is I was just wondering, is there any way insurance could be applied to some of this?
I, I'm just, I, I don't think insurance could be covered with that.
I'm just out of curiosity.
Was there, was there any physical damage to the property of the water, though?
No.
What, to the sprinkler system?
Yeah, I mean, the, the fix.
I mean, you know, if you're in your house and your pipes burst or something and then you're gone, you leak all this water everywhere. I mean, granted, your house can be damaged, but I would imagine there would be a water bill associated with that potentially as well. And I don't know. Luckily, I've never had that happen to me, but I'd be curious if insurance.
I can tell you if it's rainwater and doesn't.
Well, well, you're not paying for rainwater yet.
That was Monday.
Yes, I'm like, oh, let the board know. Sorry. About a year and a half ago, we had an individual just up on north side of town who had a leak that was never really resolved. They don't know where it came from, but he got a water bill of over three thousand dollars. This is an individual, not a company or a HOA or anything else. And the board refused to cut him any slack on that.
Thank you.
Actually, the scenario you just laid out, your application, the water, the line breaks, causes some damage, you're seeing.
Right.
And there was, we had the very same thing happen in the world for two days. Insurance to care of all the structural damage, did not take care of water.
Okay. I was just curious.
Very forthcoming. That was my personal knowledge of the warranty.
But A for enter.
And I guess the question I have, do we have, and this is a technology question, do we have the ability to identify when we're seeing some spikes at the water department?
That's why we're guys in here.
Well, but, but after two million gallons, though, that doesn't seem like it was a very timely identification.
Right. We don't have the ability to check which meter's running individually. We noticed the tower was draining, we sent the eyes out looking, that's out of the power. The tower was driven.
Are all the meters, I thought all the meters in town were upgraded recently.
Yeah. We can drive by it. We don't try to mind scan.
Now, this, this is a larger, uh, a larger meter.
Two inch, I believe.
A two inch meter, and I don't know that that actually has that same technology on it.
Okay, I don't know either for sure.
That's what I was just curious.
If, if there's a way we could identify using technology when we see a spike on that, before, you know, if we're a hundred thousand gallons or something like that and whatnot, two million gallons. But again, like that would be...
To be quite frank, we were, we just got lucky that it drained substantially overnight and sent out the guys to try and find something and found a big wet spot.
Oh, so it was within a day.
Yeah. Two million gallons is four minutes worth of production.
And I guess, I guess, um, perhaps what we want to do, we've had, oh, probably two, maybe three of these type of incidents where homeowners or HOAs have a situation where you've had a leak like this. Um, current policy says that they have to pay for that. If there's any exception to that policy, it will be included by the board. Doesn't make sense for us to, depending what you, what you as board members want to do, do you want to create a policy for accident loss of water or do you want to just assess each one on an individual basis going forward? You know, one of the, one of the challenges we always have is that if we, so, I won't do it for Harborview, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Mr. Foley, but, uh, you know, if we go back, so, yeah, well, let's, let's give Harborview a huge discount if we have, you know, three flips of debt or whatever the board decides, then anybody else that's happened to in the past will want the same deal, obviously.
And henceforth.
And, and henceforth. But, but again, um, what, what do you think would make sense to do for a situation like that? Because here, here the HOA has a fourteen thousand dollar water bill.
Well, I think we have two issues. I mean, we have the, this fourteen thousand dollar water bill and what we're going to do about that. And then the next discussion is water rates and policies. And I fully believe that we should have something in writing that says what, what we're going to do in cases like this.
Well, and that's what purpose this is, is let's have a discussion now and what people have some ideas or whether something the board members feel like to see how.
Well, I know one of the things that was mentioned at the last meeting was, uh, wholesale price. Um, I mean, I don't know what other, I don't even know what we're even legally allowed to do. Can you just simply say zero? I mean, is that even an option?
Sure. Board, as board members, you can, you can make changes or you can make exceptions to any policy or ordinance that we have in the city. Well, not any, not any.
Okay, thank you.
But, but the board can, uh, as a board say, hey, if we want to make this exception and not charge Harborview fourteen thousand or we want to charge ten percent or fifteen percent or whatever, the board has the authority to do that. And now remember, if, when you do things like that, of course, sometimes it has unintended consequences. And, uh, you have to, imagine we need to be very specific on how we...
Well, lack of anything in writing, I mean, we don't really have an option.
Right. We, well, and that's correct. We, we, we don't have any policy or standard by which to do that. But again, that's certainly within the prerogative for us to say, hey, if you want to forget half the debt and the whole debt or just charging wholesale pricing for the cost of water, it's up to you as the board members, that's something that we can consider. I mean, considering, we've had, what, probably three or four of these in the last two years or something like that? A little more than Jack will.
Yeah, if we make an exception, we have to make the exception for everybody. We can't just make the exception to one individual. We have to make the exception live and henceforth to everybody.
Well, I mean, or, or, or make a policy.
Or just make a policy.
Make a policy.
That's what I'm saying.
But if, if we make a policy, what...
You know, and it could be...
Can you make a policy retroactive?
Well, that, and that's where you have, we have to be really careful because then, you know, how far back can we go? Um, but it could be if there's, you know, you could say something like, if a water user uses more than two or three hundred percent of, of average use, then we'll take some of this down.
Yeah. I agree. I think that, you know, we should, we could have a threshold set if it's a percentage over what their normal use is, it could be approved and, um, that it was a, an actual pipe break as opposed to someone just trying to steal water or something like that, um, or say they're not using it even though they did. I mean, we need to make sure that we, we put that in the policy.
But, but can that policy, can they retroactive?
If the board wants to do that, but then you also have to say, okay, how far back are we going?
We had somebody a year and a half that had exactly the same problem.
Yeah, I don't know that. Jack's about to have a connection.
We, we in fact do have a policy. It, it's been enacted since nineteen sixty-nine. It's the same policy we had consistently. If you have a water leak, you are entitled to a, and it, and it's outside the home, you don't, you can, if you provide proof that you paid or you, a plumber fixed it outside the home, you get a hundred percent of your sewer bill wiped out. You don't have to pay your sewer bill because it didn't go into the sewer, but you have to pay all the water. Um, if it's inside your home, you don't get that benefit because everything you, that leaked in your house went down the drain, through your four drains. So we, we're limited in what we have in place. We do not have a policy to, um, in place that would...
Address.
Address the water that went through the meter, through the whatever, that was huge but lost. We do not have that policy, but we do have a policy for water breaks and how they are paid for.
I would be interested in seeing what's in there or seeing if there...
Well, and that was my question, is what's the best practice? You know? What's ICMA and MML and others suggest on this practice?
Well, in the past three or four, it, uh, obviously I doubt we've ever had a fourteen thousand dollar one, but in the last three or four, what, what did we do?
They, they...
What, what is the full price? Full price or whole car?
So we charge six dollars and sixty-nine cents, I think it is, for every thousand gallons for a customer. It costs the city five dollars and fifty cents to produce that same hundred thousand gallons, or one thousand.
To produce and, and in the...
Somebody said it'd be around ten thousand.
It's going to be around, I don't know what it is.
So it'd be what, eleven instead of fourteen? I mean...
Yeah, it was ten thousand eight hundred and something.
Well, and again, if the board wants to, I think one of the most fair ways to enact future policy would be something to defend if a homeowner or a business or something uses more than X percent over, three hundred percent over, that, that may be forgiven or maybe, you know, charging very, very regularly you do straight because for a homeowner, I mean, you know, the insurance, if, if, if you have a water leak in the house, the insurance company will cover the structure and cover what's damaged, but it doesn't cover the water.
I think we need to be careful, though. We've got to be clear that there's, there's break, there's problem, there's an issue and not, Melissa retired, there's no gardening or...
Yeah.
She got in the pool and filled it up.
I forgot to turn the water off when I went inside.
But I, I think that, uh, whatever the policy is, I, I believe we're going to have to at least cover the city's cost of producing the water. If you get down to, you said it costs five fifty to produce, I think we're going to have to at least get that. I don't think we can forgive it all. Uh, but I think we ought to see what best practice is. I think that we need to...
We'll put something together for the next meeting.
So is that an answer to this, or should we talk about this separately?
I, I think where you were going earlier, just, just for me, I think you're right. It's a policy and it leads into the next subject.
And to be clear on this one, we're not charging any fees or penalties.
Correct, it's not holding here.
So is there any, can we ask, I mean, what is the board's position on this bill right here? I mean, are, are we waiting for a policy to be written, or are we going to discuss this bill separately?
Discuss away.
I mean, okay, I guess that's kind of what I want to know. I mean, I'm all for making a policy, and that's great, but I don't know how that addresses this.
I know they'd probably like to get results.
I'd like to hear what everybody feels about this.
I, I think that we, at a minimum, right now, should drop that to wholesale and move forward.
I agree with that.
I would like to see it dropped to wholesale and even work out a payment plan of, say, pay the remaining over X number of months.
And we've already discussed that, even the course of the year.
Okay.
And again, I have a problem with that because I dealt with some people that had a three thousand dollar bill, and we didn't, the board didn't make any exception for them whatsoever. And three dollars to this household was as much as fourteen thousand dollars to him. I mean, it was just literally everything he had to pay that water bill, to keep water for his sick mother. And we, we didn't make any exception for him.
I mean, that's unfortunate, I would never advocated for that, I would at least advocated for wholesale as well, in that case.
We didn't do it.
So it's still twenty-five hundred, it's still three thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the city should not take a loss on this at all. But we could, I think we should still be able to work with the homeowner.
Unless we cause it.
Unless we cause it.
Well, I'm just wondering what legal ramifications that people who turn down might have.
We can check on that as well.
If we make a check, make a, make an exception now that we didn't make for them, what's the criteria for this exception when we wouldn't make an exception towards the other people?
It is worth broadening, they can, they can make any exceptions they want.
I know it's, I know it's, they're broadening, but you have to be able to defend it.
Well, that's true, but again, the board, this court can make changes to policy. And if we want to tell Mr. Foley or in the board, say, you know, we want to forgive fifty percent of debt or whatever the wholesale rates are or whatever, I think considering how much water we produce a year and considering that these incidents typically are fairly rare, and how many hundreds, millions of gallons of water we produce over the years, how many times does that happen? I think you probably count on one or two hands.
Well, could we do this? Could we table this discussion on that right now? Table the bill, not make him pay anything, go back to it, see if we can make changes to the, to the policies that we've got, and then apply those policies when he pays his bill after the policy's been changed.
I think, and I think that's what Alderman Booth was talking about, that we, we're running afoul of that retroactive thing, that if we change the policy, you know, that, whatever that date forward, this, this did happen back in June, I believe, is that correct? Yeah, so, so I, I believe that Alderman Booth is correct, that it is separate.
Well, I mean, it doesn't matter if I'm correct, I just don't know what we're gaining by delaying a meeting. We're either going to do it or we're not. So are we going to, are we going to take action on this and, and-
What we have generally done is talked about it and then made the action at the next meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's my point, though, are we going to come to an agreement on what we're going to do about this and then allow that to translate into a policy that we're no longer in this situation of the eaches?
I think we need to at least have a policy on paper that we not voted on and implement, but at least have a policy on paper that we can then refer to. Because again, the people who have, who have had the water problems are people that I've known all my life. And, and I hate to have to go to them when next time they ask me and say, hey, yeah, we took care of this one, but we didn't take care of yours.
Well, and, and the one thing that, I'm just looking at the days here, and we'd have to, we'd have to get everything falling into place to answer several of the questions, to have it ready by next, next Tuesday, which we, we can try, try to, well, by Thursday, when you guys get, get your packet. So, so I really doubt that we can meet that, if we can, it'd be great. But, so we might be looking at the second meeting in September, frankly, for that, just so that we can have a-
I appreciate where you're coming from, but I still think we need to address this and get him to know what we're going to do. And I think we've already talked about how charging wholesale rates and then, and then working out some sort of payment plan. I don't know if that, if we can agree to have that on the next agenda item, and then, of course, the policy thing would be something totally separate.
Well, here's, here's what can happen, is the gentleman down here on the end can determine if that goes on the agenda. And that, that's, that's, he's not just to be the good-looking TV star, he is, that's part of his job, so.
I'd like to throw out, I'd like to figure out what the best policy is. What is, what is it that these different groups that we turn to on the stuff recommend? Because I'll tell you, from a work perspective, I had this at, at my workplace, and the city had several bills last July that spiked quite significantly, including ours, which was substantial. And we got no relief. The only relief that people got were they had payment plans set up that they could take a little bit more time. And the city was pretty adamant, and there was a reason for it, and I don't know what it was. But if there's some reason we shouldn't be doing this, I'd like to know about it before we agree to do something. I'm, I'm all for the wholesale rate if we can get there, but I want to make sure that we're not creating some unintended consequences.
I understood before we even started talking about it that we can do whatever we want. I mean, I'm not, not to be blunt about it, but I mean, you know what I mean?
That is correct, the board has that power.
But here, here's what, here's what I'm seeing as a potential way to, to figure that out. We've had, you know, what are, what do other folks do, what are some legal ramifications? What I would say is if, if Mayor Fulmer feels comfortable enough that he has some answers, that, that it can be brought forward so that we can make the decision at the next meeting or whatever, whatever meeting, I believe that's, that's his job. You, you agree with that? So, so let's, let's, let's figure that out and, and present that to Mayor Fulmer.
In addition, I'd like to see what not all the other cities are doing, but what water user associations are doing. Because they're, they operate a little bit differently than the cities.
And would that discussion go towards our policy or both of these?
I think both.
Feed both, right? And inform both.
Okay.
He's not being charged in interest or anything like that, so, but I think we probably could wait.
And I think, I think the amount of money we're charging right now is probably minimal, is that correct, Mr. Foley? The amount of money you're currently paying towards this bill is pretty small?
Mill.
It's been raining a lot today.
Rain, dark rain, some do, but I can get behind this.
We're getting there.
Well, it-
You're a trooper, appreciate it.
All right, any, any more questions or further discussion on this issue? Our next board meeting, where we'll find out what best practices are, we'll come back with some suggestions, which are potential policies for these things and, or several options, and let the board discuss what they want to do, and we'll go from there.
So does that mean that's going to be the only discussion, or will we also have the proposal of perhaps just doing wholesale rates with payment plan?
I think we should have both of those during next week.
Okay.
If, again, if we have enough time-
Well, as well as policy.
We have two days to get that, that's the one thing I'm concerned about, so.
So worst-case scenario, we have before our second meeting in September, rather than next, next Tuesday. Okay? Any other discussion on the Harbor Town and Joy Water? Okay, who won? I'm number eleven, I need a motion.
Motion to discuss the rebate on the Spelman Building.
The one we're going to have.
Motion to reevaluate water rates and policies, second.
Thank you by Alderman Moore. Okay, open for discussion.
I move to table this till, till the next meeting as we get our best practices and see what we find out.
Second.
Can I add to that? Can we add to that, this particular topic, what are policy? I guess I could go through it, but I don't know if I read it or missed it, or what the policy would be for any kind of rebate towards residents, you know, like if they didn't use the service or something.
Would you, can you clarify that to me?
Actually, actually, I'm going to interrupt. We had this discussion in the staff earlier last week, and I asked staff to create a form because oftentimes, one of the things we have, and we've talked about this over the years, prior to some of the new board members being on here, but oftentimes when we ask new business, you know, we discuss water rates or reevaluate water rates. What I'm going to just hand out, we're going to put this in a PDF format on the site, and see if you fill in our line and submit it to our board. And this doesn't just apply to this issue, but any issue for new business, we really would like to see some specifics by the board member who wants to place this on the agenda. So staff has some direction as far as what it is, specifically the news Alderman will discuss in our meeting. So please take a look at this, and we would like to do this because it will make our meetings, it should make our meetings, well, it will make it so staff is really able to understand what, what you're asking for. Because sometimes, believe it or not, members of the board, sometimes the things you ask for are not really clearly understood. Members will hopefully do make that, so, so we make sure that we are addressing the questions. The staff are going to type this on speaker, and then after, okay? All right.
Okay.
Did we vote on that table?
No.
No.
It should be postponed.
Instead of table, it should be postponed.
Yes, could we rescind the motions?
Can I amend my motion from table to postpone?
Whoever made the main motion can move that.
That would be me.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll move it.
All right, second.
Second.
Second, Willie Wilson. My favor of the most important is, I'm for next board meeting, so I- Now I'm-
Okay, I move that we discuss the rebate on the Spelman Building.
So now we know. Well, we got the information, I guess, that we all were wondering about it. Will cost two point one million dollars to, plus the cost of whatever, whatever it takes to acquire the property, because I didn't see that in there, so rather expensive project for someone.
And that number's non-provailing wage.
Pardon?
That's non-provailing wage number, that's private number.
So if, if a government, if a government took, took that on, it would be-
Yeah, about two point eight, about two point eight million dollars would have been the prevailing wage of that city.
Well, I, I'm not proposing the city do that at all, but there were a lot of numbers floating around as to what it was going to take to do anything with that building. And so I don't know what the last price was that the owner wanted for it, I've heard ninety, but I don't know. So it's two million one and change, I guess, somewhere in there. And that's, that's what it is.
The neighborhood or the downtown, they can do a CID for like ten percent, and maybe they can just buy it and rehab it.
Well, if you recall, and are CIDs limited to one percent sales tax?
I believe that's the maximum, yes.
And so five hundred, with best-case scenario, it's five hundred and something thousand that they would be able to generate.
So is there a struggle between we and the city of wanting to spend the cost? That's a question.
Officer Rod, I, I would love to see someone come forward with a proposal to, you know, their companies to go and get historic tax credits to renovate buildings like this, and, you know, if someone presented a case that they were going to be able to do that and provide back at least back to the city for our use for whatever purposes, I think would be, would be an option. But I, I would struggle spending two million dollars to, to go update that building and maintain it. But, you know, those who are good at that and those who are, know how to go get those funds, welcome a proposal.
I agree. I know if you could tell him what you can do with a building to make money, if he's willing to put that kind of money into it.
Is this the same guy who suggests we dress in period? Thank you.
It just, he has, he, there's a guy that wants that building, but he says unless, until he can come up with a, and, and y'all know him, I'm just not going to mention his name, until he can come up with a way to make money on it, he's not going to invest it, but he would love to be able to do it. So if anybody has an idea that will make money, let it out.
My word.
It's a possibility.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think the city's involved in that, right? I, I would support it, let me be clear.
Very good. So if you can sense it from the board, then relative to the Spelman Building, that we are not interested in any acquisition of that building?
Unfortunately. Without some sort of a plan that-
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, I'm number thirteen.
I move to discuss replacement of the Heritage Park playground equipment.
Second.
I received a call on late Friday evening, Friday evening before last, regarding some carvings on the playground equipment down at Heritage. It was not very smart carving, I'll put it that way. And so relieved it needed to be dressed immediately, so went down, took a look at it. And with that, discovered that not only was the, did the carvings need to be dealt with in the time when they enter, but a lot of that equipment is old and needs replacement. So the slides have big holes in them filled with rocks and different things. And I'll admit, I hadn't been on that equipment in quite some time myself, so hadn't been down there to really take a look at it. But having to take a, take a look at it, became clear and spoke with Steve that, you know, this is something we probably need to look at. It's on our CID projects.
CIP.
CIP, sorry. Still back at number seven, on our CIP projects, but wanted to make sure that we discussed it. The carvings were taken care of, so a, a good constituent of mine met me down there on Saturday morning, and we took care of it. So those are, those are gone. I'd like to ask that the Parks Department maybe pay closer attention to it. I believe they maybe have been there for a while, but-
And if I may, about this particular piece of equipment or pieces of equipment, we have a similar style at Smith Fork Park, which is a little bit newer, but it's holding up, it's a different company that provided it, and it's holding up much better. Now, compound that with playground equipment, seems to be changing in style. And I don't know if you, is it Dag Park that's in North Kansas City where, where there's splash pad, is where there's little waiting pool used to be? Somebody who's a Northlander, help me out here. Is it, oh, okay, you know what I'm talking about. And, and the, the playground, the playground equipment that's- But the playground equipment there in Dag Park is climbable, it's, it's very different than this, these big plastic pieces that you see. And they're more- Rope and hope, no, rope and metal. And it, it's more interactive and, and gets kids climbing and moving a little bit better. So it's, it's a response to the couch potato kind of thing, if that still applies. So if we want to look at that, we might, whatever we look at, it might, might look very different than what we have now. And I'd be all for it.
Is that, and forgive my ignorance, I don't have a small children anymore. Is that geared towards certain age of children, though? Because I know, obviously, merry-go-rounds and swing sets and slides are obviously geared toward, toward lower age.
Let's ask somebody that does have kids. Trinda, you, you know what I'm talking about down there in Dag Park? Would, would you let Quinn play on that, or have you let Quinn play on that? It's as tall as a two-story building and it's safe, or they wouldn't be out there, but it is as tall-
It's spider webbed, you're going to catch yourself, I mean, it's, it's two stories high.
Let me get some, some information, but-
We have eleven through, through four-year-olds.
I would have killed to have something like that when I was a kid.
I do that quite a bit, I walk and I walk that, walk that trail a lot, and there's always kids down there from toddlers that can just walk to- lot, and there's always kids down there, from toddlers that can just walk, to just very pretty teens.
I would say, too, what's nice about it, is, oh, the parent who takes their kids to the park, it's nice to have shaded seating areas to sit at, I mean, it's a nice place just to be, even if you're an adult, you know, so, it's, it's designed for that one, I'll say that. It's for kids, and it's designed for our people to just, uh-
Well, it's not just equipment, playground equipment, but it's also designed for the child.
So, let me, let me see what I can come up with, and bring that back to you guys.
Perhaps at the same time, you can find out how to, uh, stop vandalism on this stuff, you know, I don't know if it's, if we, if we set up cameras, or-
Hey, and we've, and we've talked about that, let, uh, Chief, we've talked about that, I don't think right now is the, we don't have all the answers, but we are looking at, at that. Uh, now, that won't stop the vandalism, that would just help us find out who did it, and that sort of thing.
Long-term, though, if, if they do, they run cameras, and then, so- Because, I mean, there's a, there's a restroom facility down there that, as far as I know of, has been out of order for a long time, maybe it's back at or I've been down there for a while, but it was torn up pretty well a few times.
Uh, they, they do, it's in order, well, I don't know if we cleaned it out after the flood just yet, but it-
But before the flood, it was, it was working, okay. Okay, any other discussion?
I'll just say it's definitely time, I quit taking my granddaughters down to the line, 'cause it's, to me, dangerous for them right now, so I'm glad we're talking about improving it.
In my, in my opinion, given the demographics of our city, with the number of children that we have, I think it's imperative for us as a board to make sure that all of our playground equipment is very safe and, and usable, so that, so that our families, because our families spend a lot of time in parks, and we wanna make sure that we have good, safe equipment and, and stuff that they're not avoiding, because it's not safe.
And as Trinda mentioned, and frankly tying it into what we wanna do from downtown and street skate, street gate pers- perspective, we're not talking too much money to add in some benches and some trees for shade, and really make it a nice area that tides folks in.
We can get, we can get a half-trees tree, that would be a good shade tree for five hundred dollars, and have clients, and, and do, do three or four of those, and you have an instant-
You know where we can get that wholesale?
We'll talk to you later.
You got a guy, you got a tree guy, well, frankly-
I bet there are a few association groups in town, be more than happy to donate some of that stuff, too.
Yes, all right, I will, I will, Ken, welcome to the board.
Second.
Second by Alderman Moore, second by Willie Wilson. All papers out.
All right.
You stand to adjourn, thank you very much.
He didn't ask me about the flowers.
No, I didn't.
It is pretty much like, uh- Oh, yeah, this one, I'll give him a second. This is gonna be recorded. Ask him something.